All right, so that leads us to presentations and public input. I don't see that we have a presentation this evening. Well, we do, it's going to be later in the, in the program as indicated on the agenda as number 11. So if that's appropriate for everybody, we'll just go on to opening up a public input. So I have a statement to read concerning how public input is to be proceed for city council meetings and using Zoom as a media. The city takes public comment via email, written format and verbally. On October 20th, 12th, 2020, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for the city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or a telephone participant to make the verbal input. This is the time for the committee members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, or commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. And public input will toll no more than one hour unless certain or extended by a majority of members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for the members of the, of the city council, city staff, and the general public. The meeting chair member or the public, but public body has the authority of the public body, has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, or threatening, or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and ask that the speaker please send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting records. So thank you all, all the new citizens of Urbana for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. As a Zoom webinar participant, you may wish to speak during public input. What you do is to click the raise your hand button, which you'll find at the bottom of your screen, and wait to be called upon by the presiding officer. Please state your first and last name for the meeting's record. For those who are speaking to us by telephone, to raise your hand, you may do so by pressing star nine once. And you will be called upon by the host or the presiding officer. Please state your name, first name and last name for the meeting record. Public comments must be sent prior to the closing of the meeting record at the time of the adjournment, adjournment, unless otherwise noted, to the following email address. The subject line of the email must include the words "public input" and the meeting date, November 16th is today's date. Email public comments labeled as such will be incorporated into the public record. Copies or of emails will be posted after the meeting minutes have been approved, and those will help you guide yourself as you do public input with us. So I'd like to see then who are individuals who would like to do public input. I see we have five individuals. And in order that I see them, I will start, I invite Tracy Gloss to please provide public input.
Hi, good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Stacy Gloss and I am the Chair of the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission. My comment this evening is to express my support and enthusiasm to the city for the Lumpkin Family Foundation grant for street trees in Urbana, which will be accepted this evening. The Sustainability Advisory Commission is excited to support the Sustainability and Resilience Office's efforts on this grant. This is a wonderful contribution toward building healthy and sustainable communities through employing ecosystem services such as tree planting to reduce heat island effects in areas with fewer trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much also. All right. The next individual would be Dottie Vero Weiss. Dottie? Would you wish to speak?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. We can.
Okay. My name is Dottie Vero Weiss and I've been a resident of Urbana for about seven years. I'm a member of the Urbana Champagne Friends Meeting, which meets in Urbana on East Main Street. And in September, we approved a statement on police violence that I'd like to read. And I believe that you've already received copies, but I wanted to, to read it in addition. And it has relevance to a couple of the issues that are being dealt with this evening and this week. We recognize that the role of the police can be challenging. Even when they deal with difficult situations, they're expected to show respect to every community member in every interaction and to treat each individual equally, regardless of race, or age, or gender, or economic status. We were distressed by the recent violent arrest of a young black woman by Urbana police officers and by other episodes of violence by police against community members, disproportionately against people of color, similar to what has been occurring across our nation. These actions caused both physical injury and emotional trauma to the victims, their families, the community, and even the police themselves. We understand that this is not just a problem of individuals, but that some of our systems accept and may even encourage this violence and racism, which causes moral injury to those who carry it out, as well as the injury to the victim. As friends or Quakers, we believe that every person has that of God within them, some of the divine spirit of goodness and love. We believe that all people should be treated with respect and care. This leads to our commitment to using nonviolent methods to resolve conflicts when they arise, as we do not want to harm others either physically or emotionally. These beliefs also require us to examine our own behavior as individuals and as a group, and to speak out when we see injustice, violence, and oppression in the public realm. We must address systemic racism within ourselves, as well as in our social, religious, and economic institutions, and in our civil society. We stand in solidarity with those who march and protest against the police violence that disproportionately affects black and brown communities, and against the complacency of the people in our community who don't object. We're called to hold up the value of each of the people who are suffering from this violence and to work to change the systems that perpetuate racism and violence. In keeping with our values, we encourage city and county officials to take the following step. Number one, increase police training and de-escalation techniques and include follow-up sessions where body cam and dashboard cam videos are reviewed with officers to discuss what was done well and possible alternatives for each situation that would have better outcomes. Two, strengthen civilian police review boards in the county and municipalities by ensuring they have access to all complaints and have subpoena power in order to improve performance, and also to give community members faith in the system. Three, develop community forums and other measures to establish effective two-way communication. Four, increase social services in the community to address issues such as homelessness, substance addiction, mental illness, and domestic violence. Five, in addition to having community-based preventive services, strengthen linkages and collaboration between law enforcement and behavioral health programs. The two issues that this relates to would be the use of force policy and also the traffic stop data and the importance of continuing it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dottie. All right, the next individual is Tracy Chong. Would you like to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. I'm going to start tonight with a question. Can we trust the Urbana Police Department and the Chief Seraphin's leadership even with the proposed policy changes? Last Thursday, during the use-of-force listening session, after months of denying any misconduct, Brian Seraphin admitted that Officer Eric Ruff's handling of his rifle was a violation of policy during the Elia Lewis arrest. The public had been right all along, but this admission only happened after a concerned resident took their time to actually look at the evidence presented, something that UPD failed to do. Even then, it took prodding from residents, week after week, before Seraphin finally decided to say something. Seraphin should immediately issue a formal press release acknowledging the misconduct, acknowledging the failures of UPD's own investig-, internal investigation, how this failure came to be, and how the changes proposed ensure that this failure does not ever happen again. Mayor Marlin used $20,000 of taxpayer dollars for an external review that was also a failure. Hillid Hines gave the thumbs up to UPD's review, which the public knew was flawed. Mayor Marlin needs to address the fact that up to today, there has been no meaningful review, I repeat, no meaningful review, performed for the Elia Lewis arrest. Seeing that the public trust in the police department is so broken at this time, I find it astounding that we are once again trying to lessen civilian police oversight. Carol Mitten's latest actions regarding the civilian police review board have been the opposite of transparent. Why did Carol Mitten give a presentation to city council without the CPRB, without consulting CPRB members on its contents? Carol Mitten made some rather bold claims about the complaints and appeals costing $42,122,000. Carol Mitten then proceeded to say, quote unquote, "We do not track the number of hours that we spend." Gosh, if I were to claim in public that something cost $100,000, like what Carol, Carol Mitten did, I had better bring my receipts. Regarding Carol Mitten's CPRB presentation on October 26th, I'm still curious why Mayor Marlin told the public that the scheduled appeal hearing was canceled due to the appellant and CPRB members having scheduling problems. Did Carol Mitten lie to Mayor Marlin about the actual reason? Did Carol Mitten try to cover up the reason that the hearing was canceled?
Chairman?
Because Mitten herself did not follow procedures--
I think she's out of order.
--by CPRB ordinance.
All right.
It is concerning that Carol Mitten believes--
Tracy, could you please be sure to be more respectful?
But, um, I wish to continue. It's concerning that Carol Mitten believes she's exempt from the procedures mandated by CPRB ordinance. At the same time, Carol Mitten is urging city council to amend the ordinance so that procedural or administrative complaints will be excluded from the CPRB complaints and appeals process. From Carol Mitten's proposed changes to the CPRB, it was clear that her main goal was to make sure certain types of complaints were ineligible to go through the appeals process. This is a terrible move--
Let's try not to be too opinionated and try to stick to facts, please.
These, I think these are facts. Sorry, you really interrupted me. I think this is a terrible move by Carol Mitten that would lessen civilian oversight--
Mr. Chair, these are opinions. These are opinions.
Yeah, they are. Okay, of course, the public can express opinions and we are doing better. Thank you. Tracy, you're doing a little bit better. Thank, we appreciate your civility. Perhaps the content's not exactly perfect, but thank you for trying. All right, the next person up is Mr. B. Dunn, 545425@gmail. Maybe you could express your name and we open your public opinion or public comments.
Hey, my name's Brian Dunn. I'm from Champagne. And, uh, yeah, I just brought my dog in from outside and it's really cold outside, you know, which is kind of an opinion, but something I think I could state here. And it gets me thinking that I hope that our community is doing everything possible to keep people in warm houses with running water. And if there is any ability, that any motion you can make would either influence or cause that to be a certainty, that would be amazing, because as someone who is immunocompromised, I can't imagine the terror I would feel being uncertain of those conditions going into these winter months, knowing that to seek, seek shelter with someone else or in a group setting would put me at great risk as our numbers creep up to, you know, close to 10%. Those are not good odds. And, you know, sorry if these are opinions. I'm not really sure after that last comment what I'm supposed to be doing here, but I just hope to express to you that it is imperative that you do everything possible to take care of your community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, the next individual with the raised hand is Bo Barber.
Bo? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Um, so last time I talked about No Amarin shut-offs and the number of disconnections in September, which occurred over the period of one week, Urbana had 47 disconnections by Amarin. We have an update now for the data from October. And there were, for Urbana only, there was 227 disconnections by Amarin Illinois. In addition to this, there were 83 disconnections by American Water in Urbana alone. This is getting worse. And I'm working with CUPHD and Cunningham Township via Daniel Chenoweth as best as I can, but this is just an endless tide of disconnections that are going to be occurring. And I've worked with them to try and reach out to people and figure out, you know, can, get in contact with people, try and point them to the right direction so they can get the financial aid they need, talk to Amarin to get something set up. Amarin purposely sends us notices, notifies CUPHD, notifies them basically less than 24 hours in advance of when they're going to potentially disconnect services for people. And out of, just from November 1st to November 16th today, Urbana has received 181 disconnection notices. And every other day I, I get more. They switch between Urbana one day and Champagne the next. And I'm, I'm, I'm exhausted and I'm not sure how much I can keep going fighting this losing battle. And coming up in December, that Winter Moratorium that I used to even think was going to be an end-all-be-all is not an end-all-be-all. It's a means-tested thing like we currently have now. What we have here is a means-tested program with Amarin still shutting people's off. They shut off 227 people. It's a means-tested program and it is actually, the Winter Moratorium has weaker protections. This is not going to be solved by the governor. It's not going to be solved by the Winter Moratorium. It's going to come down to the local, to the local governments. And that's why I'm, I'm pleading with you. You have the power to act. I, I, you passed the resolution promising that you would act, and I understand there's things you can, you know, to settle out, but there, we're not, we don't have time. That's not a luxury. Where I've worked with organizers, people have found homes abandoned because they've lost their water and they've lost, they've lost their power. And I know that because these people have gone to houses that they know people lived in. There was stuff still in the front yard. And these people went by these places over the course of three different days, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and no one was there. They went different hours of the day. Those people were gone. And it's going to get worse as people abandon their homes to find shelter elsewhere during a pandemic that spreads like a wildfire. And so you, I know you've received an email today that explained what you can do. You can act on this immediately and you can, whether for whatever period of time that you can do it, you have to do it. I'm begging you, because people are going to die because of this. And I can only do so much with organizers that I'm working with. Daniel Chenoweth can only do so much. And we're just, we're trying, but you need to act and you need to act now. Because this is going to get bad and it's already bad and it's, it's going to get worse. But thank you for letting me comment.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I do believe we are putting, going to address something about that eventually here and we hope to share that with you. There is also, I wanted to comment that the city offers a list of immediate assistance resources on the city website for Urbana rental mortgage and utility assistance through the township and through different organizations in the community. And I encourage anybody who has an issue with their services to please use those resources if they are able to. All right, Grace Wilken, your turn to speak for public input. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Grace Wilken. I'm an Urbana resident. And I want to talk about the discussion item today. And this report shows that, you know, we have some blatant racial discrepancies in our police and policing, and that these are deep issues that need to be addressed. I'm concerned about the pilot program. It seems really vague. Sounds like officers can arrest or do traffic stops for any reason within this area and also outside of this area. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I think that it's not meaningfully addressing the deeper issues of how we support our communities and how we deal with racial issues and police accountability. And there are a lot of deep issues here that go along with traffic safety and community safety. I also want to talk about item seven, this grant for tree research and tree planting. I think that's a great thing and really important to do. And that's great that our city staff was able to get that grant through and accepted from the foundation. And I'm also wondering if the combined almost $10,000 additional pay to city staff from the city is necessary. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But just a question I wanted to ask, if that's within the scope of their full-time job already or not. Just something to think about with the pandemic and economic hardships. And then another item I want to talk about was continuing to work on preventing utility shut-offs, whether that's pressuring state and county governments, the utility companies directly making emergency orders, whatever needs to be done to try and keep people safe and as housed as possible. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Grace. Next up, we have Ellen Axelrod. Ellen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Could you put up the clock, please? Thank you. Hello from Bloomington. Today, the Bloomington City Council has voted unanimously to start to prepare action on utility shut-offs. Next week, they are going to have an in-depth discussion with their legal staff about what additional material they can add to their ordinance in order to act. That took one discussion. How long has it been with you all? I appreciate that you have acted. But Bloomington isn't exactly a progressive town. They're in the middle of also a Republican county. So what I want to emphasize here is that it is very clear, even in the definition of emergency services in 20ILCS 3305, the whole state statute, which is called the Illinois Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Act, that the emergency services includes in their definition the temporary restoration of public utilities. Amarin Illinois, Illinois American Water, all of the rest of the major corporations are public utilities. The Illinois Commerce Commission regulates public utilities. The email that you were sent this morning specified very clearly how the existing ordinance, not a new ordinance that needs to be adopted, allows for these emergency powers, which again, are not enacted by ordinance, but enabled by emergency statute so that one can act through the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency. Decatur is one of the most significantly affected communities in addition to Springfield. They have had hundreds more disconnections this past month of October. Their positivity rate is up to 20%, and that's before evictions even hit. That's coming for us next. And if we do not do everything that we can, again, proactively, we are going to be in a much more dire straits. That also being said, I know that this is difficult with our General Assembly effectively disbanded and with the governor not calling them back into action. He unilaterally governs who gets what sort of emergency funding. I would ask that the budget be secondary to the safety of our residents. Because while we can make up debts in the future, we cannot bring people back from the dead. And I'm speaking to you very plainly, because that is where things are at. Last time I had checked, we had over 4,000 people on ventilators in our state. The death toll is around 10,000 plus. Most people who are on ventilators do not come back. Our death toll is going to mount. And again, evictions are about to happen. And not every county is like Champagne County, where the Public Health District Administrator Julie Pride agreed to talk to Sheriff Dustin Heerman to stop evictions, just like he had promised to do back in March or April, and hasn't promised again since. So please, more than words, we need you to use the emergency powers that you have available. We are running out of time in Champagne County. Even NPR said earlier that this weekend, we have had the highest number of COVID cases cumulative since the pandemic has started. We're running out of time. Please act.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Ellen. Are there any other individuals who would like to participate in public comment at this time? I'm trying to, trying to recall if there had been any public comment offered via email today. Certainly, there was one or two concerning one of the cases, the zoning, the zoning Board of Appeal or the zoning issue that we're going to be talking about in our future here. So, um, all right, okay.
And I think Evelyn Underwood is here.
Yes, I see Evelyn Underwood. Yeah, I call upon you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, everyone. I sent a short email. And so let me read that quickly. The chief's recommendation 2021 pilot program, colon, Bishop King James Underwood and I, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, would like to go on record as supporting Mr. Daryl Cruz's draft resolution authorizing police, policing change, changes to improve equity in traffic stops, practice, and tactics. We believe that this will put the Urbana City Council on record committing to the change needed. The 2021 pilot program is a good first step. Well, it's a good first step, but we need a more comprehensive program, which is clearly defined in the draft resolution that Mr. Cruz submitted. Thank you for your consideration. Now, uh, I would just like to say there's a lot, I would like to say that 23-page document, uh, we've gone through that and, um, we've gone through that, and we see in the latter part, especially, you know, I'm not a statistician, and, but, we can see in plain view and eyeballing that disparity, you know, so, we can see that, and, and we know about implicit bias, not evil, but implicit bias. I know about the training and all that, you know, we've been at this a long time, a long time, and I can see with Mr. Cruz's document, and also the two-page informational piece that the chief gave to the mayor, the memo, that seemingly, don't you agree, Bishop, that it's a good first step? I would like to say further, that we need to have, maybe, Bishop had a name for it, what did you call that? Well, a short, I can't, I don't have that, what he called it, a dashboard report quarterly by race to the, to the public and to the council, to, just so we won't forget, and that's one reason that we need something in writing. I don't think we read it for an ordinance or anything of that nature yet, but a policy, a resolution, so it'll be in front of the council, in front of the people, that this is very serious, and we need to do something, and as I forestated, that first step is a good step, but we need a more comprehensive document, and I think what we're supporting and others, and what we've talked to, people we've talked to, is supporting is something that the council could do. Thank you very much.
Okay. Dr. Underwood, thank you for your commentary. Okay, I don't see other raised hands at this point, so I guess we're gonna close now public input for this meeting, and go to the other parts of the agenda.